I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. And go to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we go to opening bids for cleaning contract. We have two, correct? First one we got is from JNC Enterprises at $31,200 a year at $2,600 a month.
It's $31,200 a year.
Second one we got is TLC Services at $32,400 annually at $2,700 a month.
$32,400?
Yeah. I'll look those.
That's really close.
Yes, it is.
That's even closer than the card bid sometimes. I mean, for a cleaning contract, you would think it would be maybe a little... Not that close.
A broad range.
Yeah. That's interesting.
You got both right around?
Yeah.
I guess from here, we can either accept a bid or we could go and table it for a week and haven't looked at it any deeper, but really not a whole lot to look at on those. One's one paragraph. The low bids, JNC, right?
JNC. We have one more week before July 1st. This takes effect July 1st? When would this go into effect?
It'd be July 1st.
So probably the sooner the better for these guys?
Exactly.
Then they would know. Otherwise, it'd be tomorrow. There's no name on the TLC. As far as just says TLC.
TLC, yep.
Don't know who that is. And JNC is the one that's done it in the past, correct?
Yep. How many years?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
I would say JNC is the low bid. We're familiar with them. They've done a good job in the past, so I don't see a reason to wait here a week. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept the contract from JNC for $31,200 a year at $2,600 a month.
I'll second that.
What is that dollar amount?
$31,200.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? They've done a great job here for the years before their low bid. Any other discussion?
I think it's good that we've put this out to bid. I mean, it shows that we're trying to find the lowest bid. There's been a little concern because the owners of JNC do work for the county and to keep this as open as possible. There's a reason that we wanted to get this out to bid to let people know that it's not an inside job here. There's anything underhanded and they've done a great job and always been open with us and
Sounds good to have you back.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
I'm just going to say a couple of things here. I will intend then to basically revise the previous contract. That was between JNC and the county. Going to clean it up just a little bit with respect to it. And what I'm referring to there is I know there were some proposed changes going through this go-round and a little bit of the language and the like that I had received attached to an email. I think it was called the bidding requirements were a little bit different than the previous require... or, excuse me, contract requirements. I'll try to have that ready for next Wednesday's meeting along with a proposed resolution approving that contract. And it's my understanding, and I just want to make sure I have the numbers right going in, $31,200 as an annual amount, $2,600 per month to take effect July 1 of 2014 for a period of two years, I believe, is what I was seeing.
Did that say paid the first of the month or by? One of those said that.
I don't think it did.
He didn't? Okay.
Is it not saying?
That was always worked out in the contract before.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Any other discussion?
I think it's kind of funny that our county attorney wants to clean up a cleaning contract.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution supporting Marshalltown's lead hazard control grant application. This is something that we've had every year. Correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Nope, it is.
They have a blank for the committing amount. So we need to fill that blank in.
Five thousand in the past.
The past has been five thousand.
So I am open for a motion if you choose.
Must be a resolution too, isn't it?
Yes.
This is.
Make a motion then where you accept the resolution with filling in the amount in cash and in kind at five thousand. A resolution supporting the City of Marshalltown Housing and Community Development Department to apply for the lead hazard control grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, including jurisdiction of Hardin County, Iowa.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Brian?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Lance?
Motion carries. Accept write resignation from Greenbelt Home Care Board.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation for Greenbelt Home Care Board of Barb Duncan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Like to thank her for her years of service. And we'll miss her.
Any other discussion? I'd integrate on that too. She's been there for a while. Has done a good job. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ineligibility homestead and military credits to be disallowed, 2013 and 14 payable 15 and 16 and 15 or 14 and 15 and 15 and 16.
So we have two sheets in front of us. I suppose we should do them individually. So I'll do the first one here is 2013 payable 2014 and 15. I make a motion to accept those as printed on our sheet.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm wondering if it's a 14, 15, that would be this year's taxes. If it's disallowed or allowed, that would affect
They're all disallowed. All disallowed.
So that would mean that they've already gotten their credit on their tax bill. I just have questions because the taxes are not delinquent or if they're not paid. And if they're paid, they got the homestead credit. So am I supposed to go get that money? If they were allowed that to set or was there homestead? I guess I'm not sure. They said payable 14, 15. Oh, that's next year. I'm off in lava land.
It's a good question for the next one, though. Any other discussion?
I thought maybe I was wrong. I'm going, we have it wrong? Is it probably?
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, the next one we got is 2014 payable 15 and 16.
All right. Go ahead and make a
That's well in the future.
I'll make a motion to get us to discussion that we do the homestead and military credits to be allowed and disallowed 2014 payable 15 and 16 as listed.
And I'll second that.
Now, what was your question again? Is this Michelle?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Because he's having half the day either, so we're still good there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Change the status in the recorder's office. What we have here is a new position, temporary seasonal part-time with a salary increase. And I am
I'd be willing to table this one till next week so we can maybe talk to Barb. The hourly rate salary is a little out of the ordinary. There might be a reason why, but I haven't talked to her yet to know why.
I got a motion to table.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion?
Has she talked to anybody on the board in the last?
Not to me, no.
I have talked to Barb numerous times. In all cases, I have brought up the fact that she needs to talk to us in a work session. I think I understand what she's trying to do here, but this paperwork is not correct in the manner that we've talked about.
Maybe she just missed... So we need to have a discussion now?
She needs to have a work session with the board.
Wrong box or something.
And she's going to have to implement it to when she could have a work session with us. I don't think we need to implement a work session with her, do we?
It would be her coming to us, not... I have not had contact. She has not contacted me probably for ever since this has all gone on. And I don't understand that there's not the communication. And that's why I asked the question. Has she contacted any of you? I know Lance has gone to her several times. But just to bring this to us and we're going to hire someone and not even be here at the meeting with the way the office has been run, I think is not running an office correctly. So we need we need something better from that office because we're sure not getting it. We just got an email yesterday on someone that's frustrated with the office. So this office is not getting any better.
I don't necessarily have an objection to the hire. But I was just curious on the hourly wage.
It would be great if she was here to tell us what was going on.
Well, I agree. I was hoping she'd be here.
Any other discussion?
I have a question just from payroll aspect because I know you're going to ask the question. So it's more for Randy. If you're not having action on that and that person's already worked hours, do we wait to pay until it's approved or what? How do we address that?
That is a good question because her date of employment is 6/16. It was Monday.
We pointed out the fact before that you can't hire until we've approved. Right now, the approved rate is part-time salary at $10 an hour.
When is that?
That's what we approved on our salaries for our salary sheets. Part-time recorder, $10 an hour.
Okay. I guess when was that approved?
Two weeks ago.
She has been employed here prior. And her end hourly wage was at 1350.
My concern is she's going to have an expectation to be paid because she's worked hours. And I just want to know from my standpoint for Kelly doing payroll, how does she handle that if it's not approved?
And she's been marked down for, can I say the hourly salary that she's marked down for?
Yeah.
1750?
So you do have a significant difference
Yeah.
between those two?
Problem is, we're in a rock and a hard place and we didn't put ourselves here.
Yeah. You definitely are in regard to the situation because you've I mean, you have the situation where you have the overall say in regard to the budget of the recorder's office.
Right.
But to a certain extent, well, more than a certain extent, you don't have each line item say with respect to how those funds are spent.
Right.
But you also have where the recorder's office does not have, you also have the authority, what authority you do have over the auditor's office who happens to do the payroll. Now, you do have that tension there and you do have the potential of there with regard to the recorder. And I'm going to say, I don't know that I have a definitive answer at this point. But I believe my advice would be is to pay it out at the time being as to what you have already approved at the $10 per hour. Now, you might have a claim for back wages coming, especially if you end up approving something higher in regard to that with respect to the future. So you have to be aware of that. And I do believe that part of the reason that could be based would be a recorder claiming that, well, as long as I stay within my budget, overall, I can pay whatever I want to. Okay? But my advice at this point in time would be to pay out what you've already approved at the $10 per hour. But beware, you could be looking at something coming around in the future. Now, I have no idea. There's a number of things that would go into here as well. I don't know where the recorder's office is with respect to its overall budget. Whether it could make this fly, so to speak, without the board's approval or blessing with respect to them. I don't know how close that budget is for the rest of the year or not because you are dealing with the very tail end of this fiscal year with regard to these payments. That's another factor I might want to take a look at. But like I said, I don't know where that, I mean, that is at.
So right now, we've tabled it. Can any money be paid out?
What's that?
Right now, we've tabled it or we're going to vote on tabling it. Can any money be paid out until next week this comes up, like Jessica's?
I was going to say, haven't you already approved a part-time employee for the recorder's office at $10 per hour? I thought I had heard that.
Well, it's on
Not this employee, just in general, just part-time employee.
Yeah. Well, I mean, with respect to that, if it's in general, does it matter which employee gets plugged in there?
I don't know.
Well, I think if you've already I think if you've already approved a part-time employee in general at $10 per hour, that, I mean, that is authority to pay that out.
I believe she currently has an employee at part-time at $10.
A temporary part-time.
Temporary part-time at $10.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would just advise that the shorter period of time this is not resolved, the better. Okay? In order to say it the other way around, the quicker that can get Barb in front of the board in order to hash this out and get an agreement in regard to this, the better.
Yeah. I think that's part that's frustrating because since I've been here for three and a half years, anybody that's hired someone has contacted the board and all this is taken care of before we even get to this point. And if you've noticed over the past few years, we just go through and read it because we know what's going on already. We don't have a clue in this situation of what's going on because there is no communication to her coming to us. So how do we sit here and make a decision when she's not making any effort to let the board in on what she's doing?
I can understand.
I guess as I understand it, then we leave it tabled and she would have permission to at least pay her $10 an hour. That's how I'd understand it right now.
Okay.
And in lieu of communication, if there's something we don't know, she needs to communicate that with us.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Don't you do that every year in January? Where you approve all the deputies and positions?
I haven't done it yet. Have you talked about? Not that I recall ever doing it.
You might look back and see if you did. Because I thought every year then you appoint your boards and commissions and stuff.
We do that.
And then you have to approve all the deputies every year, don't you?
We've just done it once. But I recall, do you recall doing it annually?
I don't.
Aye.
I mean, we don't formally approve it. Everybody comes to us and tells us, okay, this person's going to do this, this person's making this, that they're going to be a deputy. Or I'm going to hire this person. They're going to be at this and I've got this money to pay for it. But it's not a formal, like Paul talked this morning about formally vote on this. This is what your structure is for the It kind of is because then we're doing the budget. We set it up in the budgeting. So the line item's there. So it's we're doing it. It's just maybe not structured like Paul wants it structured. I just like, I mean, my concern is it just gets more people looking at the person that we're hiring to. We don't, not that the person here is a problem at all, but I think the more eyes you have on who's coming in, the more input you have about what the person is or isn't. So do we need an amendment to that that's or anything or?
Aye.
Do you have Jessica permission to pay the 10 or what?
I just wanted to clarify because we're going to have accrued wages that need to go on our accruals report because we've done the last payroll and she's employed within the budget. So I wanted clarification before we get to that point if you're not making an action today. And you haven't voted on your table. So that's why I asked the question.
But after we table it, do we need another motion to give you permission to pay it?
That was answered.
Okay. Then we're good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. In favor of tabling? All say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Fourth of July must be coming.
Yes, it is.
Fireworks permits.
Oh, boy.
You want me to start in or?
Just do them all around.
Well, let's start with Knutson family. It looks like we have a no here for has the operator or operators had any training in exploding fireworks? But then we go with yeses across the line for safety. So they have all of their safety boxes crossed. So I'll make a motion to approve the Knutson family for their fireworks application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
I can do Gurkies next.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We're in our own world over here.
So let's do Gurkies Lake and Campground. And it looks like the operator, same box number four, operator and operators had any training in exploding fireworks? No. But we have yeses across the board for safety again. So I'll make a motion to approve Gurkies Lake and Campground for fireworks permit application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Haven't they done it before at Gurkies?
Gurkies has. I think the
Maybe the Lance.
Yeah, Lance Bala might be the first.
First time for him. That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
But the actual person that's operating has not.
Because there, you're probably having to deal with campers too, being around. So you want some
Got a lot of newbies here for fireworks.
If I recall, he's a state trooper. I mean, it's safety would be a priority.
I would think so.
Michelson family reunion. Whoop, whoop, whoop. Sorry.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
We've got a lot here. So Michelson family reunion. Again, we have a no for operator. It's first time for him, but for safety.
It's an EMT. That's pretty good.
Yeah, he is an EMT. That is good. And he has a fire hose. Water hose. Safety, oh, we didn't box number 11 if the search is
He answered that, that he would be conducting it immediately following the display. So 11 is if it is not conducted.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yep, gotcha. Make a motion to approve the firework permit application for the Michelson family reunion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. All opposed, same side.
I meant to say aye before. I was reading.
And the last, the last one here. Jensen family reunion July 4th and they've they're an ongoing. They're every year and it's yeses across the board. So I'll make a motion to approve the application for a firework permit for the Jensen family, Fourth of July celebration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have change of status in Secondary Roads Department, Brent Colvin. Motor, what's that? Motor Operator One, Grading Crew Foreman.
Promotion. Make a motion to accept Brent. It's promotion at $18.28.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Utility permit, Secondary Roads Department. All Midland Power permit, 61814A, 61814B, 61814C, 61814D.
Make a motion to accept all those permits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Accept compensation for detour.
This is compensation from the DOT for putting electric traffic on our roads from the bridge that they replaced that. Recommend you accept that. It's $13,035.61.
You're recommending that we accept it. So I'm assuming you're happy.
Did you want more?
She always wants more.
But they used a formula. So it's hard to
It's hard to argue. I'll make the motion that we accept that then.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Anything going on in Secondary Roads?
Yep, we just got reclaimer, retriever disc delivered yesterday and got that from South Dakota. Forgot to bring the cylinder for it. So it sits in our shop.
Can you explain what a retriever disc is?
Well, it's just a series of discs in front of the mortar grader and that we try to reclaim the shoulder and the rock. We use it on paved roads and on gravel.
So it takes out that little lip one with paved roads. So what it's there to help do?
Sometimes those
Yeah.
So we have to be careful how much we take at a time. Tim Windelows mortar grader. Got fixed. It was under warranty and they came and took it back. It's not running. So they're supposed to be bringing us a replacement. We're still working on Clem's mortar grader for replacing the transmission. I believe the spray truck is going to be done tomorrow. Wes and his guys are going over to get that and check it all out. Piles driven down at the bridge, south part of, south of Hubbard there. And we're waiting for the contractor on the box. The dirt works done. He needs to come in and start, start forming up.
Sounds good.
And we getting close to being done with the rock program that we implemented this year. So it's going quicker now. We're getting closer to all.
Sounds great. Thank you. Any other business?
Wanted to remind you that the meeting today was about that Pine Lake issue and our bridge.
Thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, I'll ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most carries for adjourn.